Good evening and welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, May 14, 2019. At 6:30 PM, I'm calling this meeting of the Common Council. The City of Wausau to order. We'll begin tonight's proceedings with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please press yes to take roll call. We have 10 members present.
And tonight, we'll start off with two proclamations. The first proclamation is Kids to Parks Day. Whereas on May 18, 2019, this is the ninth Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust. And Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and to visit America's parks. And it's important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks. And we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, hypercholesterolemia. Yeah, got it. And Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Now, therefore I, Robert B. Milkie, Mayor of the great City of Wausau, do hereby proclaim Kids to Parks Day on Saturday, May 18, 2019. And I urge all residents of the City of Wausau to take the children of their lives to a neighborhood state or national park. And then we also have a proclamation for World Migratory Bird Day. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities. And many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic harbingers of spring. And these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insect pests and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes. And public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face, and empowered to help address those threats can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And since 1993, the International Migratory Bird Day has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America on their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern United States. And hundreds of thousands of people observe International Migratory Bird Day, gathering in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers, and wildlife refuges to learn about birds, take action to conserve them, and simply to have fun and enjoy them. Now, therefore it be I, that Robert B. Milkie, Mayor of the incredible City of Wausau, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 14, 2019, as World Migratory Bird Day. And I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. And we have Sue Hogue here to represent and accept this proclamation. If you could come forward, please.
Thank you once again, Mayor, for reading this annual proclamation. That's a Bird City requirement. I haven't received word yet on Bird City, our application this year, so I can't update you on our status of that so far. But this Saturday, May 18, besides being Take a Kid to the Park Day, is the Wausau Bird Club and Bird City, Wausau's World Migratory Bird Day event. It will be held at the Monk, Robert S. Monk Botanical Gardens. And we're having a bird walk. It starts at 6:30 Saturday morning. And meet at the entrance gate at the gardens. And also earlier, I talked to some of you about the Bird-a-thon and our raising funds. We've had great support with the new Parks Director, Jamie Polley, and also Lauren Nichols from Marathon County Zoning and Planning. And the Bird Club with our funds have undertaken a big project. We're restoring native plant species to Barker Stewart Island. This year, we've already planted maple trees and oak trees. Oak trees are the number-one tree you can plant for the birds, and maples are number-two. So with the generous support of people in the community for our Bird-a-thon, we hope to continue to plant every year until that island is totally restored to native species. Thank you.
Thank you. And there is no citizens registered tonight to speak, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. First off, for file number 061215, for insurance claims from January 2009 to March 2019, excuse me, 2019 for January through March of 2019. Mr. Smith has asked us to be pulled up and be put on the resolutions and ordinances, which we will do. That said, starting with the consent agenda, starting with file number 190401, the minutes of the previous session meeting from April 23, and ending with file number 190108, a resolution approving or denying various licenses as indicated. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Neal. I have a second. Mr. Gisselman?
Begin voting, please. Motion has passed unanimously.
And we will put that file number 061215 for insurance claims dated from January 2019 to March 2019 at the start of the resolutions and ordinances. Mr. Smith had asked if this be pulled and discussed. Go ahead, sir. Oh, I should get a motion in a second. I apologize. Can I get a motion to accept this? Motion by Mr. Nutting. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbs? Now, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an opportunity between the finance meeting and this meeting to discuss the situation with Mr. Lenman. And I was just concerned with the form that these claims are listed on. They didn't really give us enough information. We question exactly like the last one dated 2/12/19. It says Mary Quante is filing a claim. And the reason is backing out of driveway and hit parked car. And I'm sure Ms. Quante didn't back out of the driveway and hit the parked car since she's filing the claim. So I think we need more information as to who hit Ms. Quante? What department were they from? And I think Mr. Lenman and I had a discussion. He's going to consider making a recommendation. They revised this form to give us a little bit more information on what happens on these claims. Thank you.
Okay. So be it. If you could turn off your light. Thank you.
And you may begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 190503, a confirmation of the mayor's appointments. We have two. One for the Business Improvement District, a bid board for Robin Bookholz. She's replacing Ms. Deb Rice. Her biography and introduction for letter is attached, as is for the Wausau Arts Commission, Mauro Mullen-Reithard, who is a new appointment. And again, her resume is attached as well. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Gisselman, second by Mr. Neal.
Begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 16-0913, a resolution of the Economic Development Committee, amending the proposal plan submitted by Urban Street Bistro on the sale of the property for the redevelopment of the former Westside Battery and LNS Printing properties at 401 and 415 South First Avenue. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be a plus, positive of $246,895. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Mr. Neal.
Begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 02-1005, a resolution of the Finance Committee, approving agreement for purchase and sale of real estate, partial acquisition with option for full acquisition at 224 East Thomas Street. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be $6,600 for the partial acquisition and $71,000 for full acquisition. $6,600 to be deducted for a balance of $64,400. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Mrs. Rasmussen.
Begin voting. Motion has passed 7 to 3.
File number 03-1007, a resolution of the Finance Committee, approving the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program allocation. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact is an award of $597,790 in Community Development Block Grant Funds to the City of Wausau. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal, second by Mr. Martins.
Begin voting. Motion passed 10 to 0.
File number 12-1011, a resolution of the Finance Committee, approving reprogramming of Community Development Block Grant Funds, homeowner rehabilitation activity, and the street reconstruction activity. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be none. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Kalbach, and a second? Oh, Mr. Neal. I'm sorry, Mr. Nutting will second that. Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This one, I just, I'd appreciate a little bit of clarification as to, you know, the sort of, it seems like a transfer of monies from one purpose to another. Was the feeling that the need was greater in the street reconstruction? Or there was not enough interest in the home rehabilitation aspect? Just a little bit of background on that, be a welcome.
And Tammy Strauss from Community Development will explain.
Good question. There's a lot of moving parts with our revolving loan funds for the homeowner rehabilitation program. A little history. With the block grant funds, in the last couple of years, the rules with the HUD funding has changed in which the revolving loan funds that we have on hand, as loans get repaid to us, we have to recycle those funds very quickly. Otherwise, it is used against us for our timeliness factor with HUD. The last couple of years, we've been receiving $150,000, $200,000 in revolving loan funds for this program. And we can't get the money out the door fast enough because of the lack of contractors. They're busy out in their real world. They don't want to have to deal with our federal regulations. The street on First Street is in very bad repairs. We've had two great developments that happened over there. So we identified this as a high priority to let's get these streets redone. And we had some funds left over, a huge amount of funds in this revolving loan funds that we could reprogram, help the need of this area. And in the meantime, we're still receiving repayments back.
You may begin voting. That motion has passed unanimously.
File number 18-1109, a resolution of the Finance Committee, approving the 2019 budget modification for the roof replacement project, Public Works Garage in Salt Barn. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact will be $310,000. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Herbs, second by Mrs. Rasmussen.
Begin voting. That motion has passed unanimously.
File number 12-0219, a resolution of the Human Resources Committee, amending the employee handbook language in Section 8.01, General Provisions. Committee action approved 5 to 0. Fiscal impact none at this time. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mrs. Bismackelhany, thank you. And a second by Mr. Gisselman. Mrs. Tow.
Tony, can you just come up and clarify something? I know we talked about this via email. But can you just validate for us that the biometric screening is voluntary for employees? And they all receive an incentive regardless if they participate in the biometric screening or not?
I believe you're referring to an item that was passed on the consent agenda?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. My apologies. Hold on. Which one is this one, Tony, a mayor?
The Section 8.01, General Provisions, is a section in the employee handbook that allows individuals in public safety positions who have left union positions to mimic some of the benefits that they used to gain as part of the union. This revision specifically addresses health insurance contributions and pension contribution amounts.
Okay, my apologies. Wrong file number, but don't go far because I do have questions for the next file.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. You may begin voting. That motion has passed unanimously.
File number 12-0219, a resolution of the Human Resources Committee, amending the employee handbook language in Section 3.04, nepotism, employment of relatives. Committee action approved 4 to 1. The fiscal impact will be none. Entertainer will motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Gisselman, second by Mr. Nutting. Mrs. Tow was first.
Sorry, there you go. I just want to confirm my understanding of the changes in this policy. So if I have a direct relationship with someone that I don't report to, am I disqualified from the hiring process?
No, the disqualification only applies to individuals who have a reporting relationship. And we further defined the quality of reporting relationship, which would be disqualifiable. So, no, if you, if your relative does not report to you, then no...
You're a viable candidate, then?
Yes.
Okay. So I was reading the minutes that came out of the Human Resource Committee with Chief Bliven's, I guess, feedback to the committee. So in that situation, what, I'm assuming the in-law was removed from the hiring process because of this, of this policy?
The policy language at the time simply said, "reporting relationship." The revised policy language also goes on to clarify the fact that if you are the overall reporting responsibility, so essentially if you're the department head, relatives would be prohibited from working within your department. So under the previous policy language, that individual was disqualified for having a reporting relationship for someone in the chain of command.
Okay.
Under the new policy language, that individual would still remain disqualified because the relation is the department head.
And I saw some of the recommendations that came forward that talked a little bit about, well, would we consider that if there is no direct reporting relationship, that that could be considered? And I think that, just my experience, I can't speak for everyone else's experience, but in the private sector or in other organizations, candidates would be considered, even if they're related, as long as they don't have a direct reporting relationship. And I understand that Chief Bliven, I'm using this example because it was in the minutes, even though Chief Bliven only has one direct report, you know, Matt Barnes, I would still consider that candidate, you know, viable. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, even though he oversees the entire, you know, police department, right? But he doesn't have a direct supervisory role over the related family member? So what I'm trying to understand is, I get that there could be, it could be viewed, right? There could be perceptions out there that there's a conflict of interest. There is unfairness because this person's related to the overall, you know, department leader. But I think in this situation, when I think about this, this policy, it just makes me think about how many more instances like this would occur. And it makes me think about the Monk community because we're all related in some way or fashion. But though I know that we don't have Monk leaders in certain departments of City Hall, and that may not be a great example that I'm sharing, but if we're looking at the talent pool that's available in, you know, central Wisconsin, I wonder if that would eliminate some of, some potential interests from candidates who may want to be, you know, an employee of the City of Wausau. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, I have some reservations about the, about the policy. And I would have loved to see it state that candidates are not disqualified if they don't have a, if they're not a direct report of a certain supervisor or someone who's in a management supervisory role. So I just want to encourage council members to consider that as we're voting tonight because we're studying, you know, a policy here that could eliminate a lot of great talent that's interested. And I know we have a hard time filling some of our roles today that's open, so be mindful to that. And just wanted to share. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was the lone dissenting opinion vote in this committee meeting. I, at the time, I spoke at length as to why, and I won't do that tonight. But in a nutshell, I saw it as a sort of a 20th-century solution to perceived need in the 21st-century workplace. And I thought it was a little heavy-handed and overly black and white in a workplace that is anything but black and white in terms of real people. You know, we, the relationship that was stated in the minutes is just an example of how this could happen at any time in that, let's say, a department head has a sister or a brother. And the sister or brother has a significant other who seeks employment in that department and qualifies for a position in that department and applies and even goes through the process. And at some point, that significant other decides to, you know, make it legal and get married, which takes them right out of the running just for making it legal and getting married. If they, and now, if they had not, this, this would not affect them because they're not a relation. In the 21st century, relationships take so many different forms. There's wording in this that refers to dating relationships. If I were a single person and I went out with somebody and had a drink, am I dating them? Is that person my girlfriend or just a friend? Who's to say? You know, who's, who's the police, if you will, in charge of looking at my relationship and making a determination that affects employment? These are the real-world type of things that are going to happen or undoubtedly that will come into play at one time or another. Or people will try and game the system and play it by not making it legal or by staying as, you know, dark as they can be with their relationship. This is all about perception. And, you know, the truth is nepotism, by its own definition, is not something just, you know, dealing with relations, relatives. Nepotism can take the form of favoritism of, for anybody. The problem with nepotism is when somebody acts in a nepotistic way and provides preferential treatment to somebody that they like or they're related to or have a business relationship with or for whatever other reason. That is nepotism. But we've looked at that potential problem and boiled it down to, oh, boyfriends, girlfriends, and relatives. And it's just not the way the world is. And I really take exception to this. And I asked in the, in the meeting if we could take this back, table it, and go back and rethink it in terms of 21st-century realities and 21st-century language and not be so quick and black and white with our decision. Because I felt it was very, very quickly thought out. And it's not reflecting what I see in the world. And I see too many downsides to it, so I still oppose this. Thank you.
Mrs. Rasmussen?
Thank you. I have to say, I agree with Mr. Neal and Ms. Tow on this one. Ms. Tow's points about thinning out your candidate pool, perhaps unnecessarily, are spot-on. I mean, we have situations where we may be missing out on some fantastic job applicants because they're an in-law or they're someone's cousin. And I think that her assumptions or her conclusions about direct reporting relationships are spot-on. I mean, obviously, you don't want that familial relationship to surface in a direct report situation. But if you have someone who runs a department and someone else who is aspiring to be hired at an entry-level position, there are an awful lot of tiers of management in between. And I think that as a well-managed organization, the logistics of that certainly could be managed here without a policy like this that doubles down on, you know, originally, when the situation came up, the policy was a little bit ambiguous. And now, what we've done is pretty much slammed the door on qualified applicants just because they may, you know, become the wrong person's spouse or have the wrong spouse at the time of application. And so I think that, you know, we already, within some of our departments, have spouses who both work in the department, but they see to it that they are on opposite shifts and they work on opposite crews so that there isn't that direct report relationship, and it mitigates that risk. You know, and I think if you are, you know, going to approach the idea of nepotism, you know, either from an HR standpoint or from a legal standpoint, you want to make the most cautious, safe decision you possibly can make. And that's what this policy is. I mean, this obviously freezes out any possibility that you would have to deal with a problem like this because you have no way to hire anybody that would fit those roles. But I think that if we want to evolve as an organization and, you know, like Tom said, account for modern family relationships as well, that we should be a little bit less restrictive. And I think this policy needs to be rethought. And I think that, you know, Chief Bliven's comments in the minutes were somewhat detailed. But I've had a detailed conversation with him about this situation before this item ever got to committee. And, you know, Ms. McElhenney did as well. And I think that in a well-managed organization where you have proper reporting relationships in place, you can manage that risk without missing out on some potentially excellent candidates, you know, that, that this policy would restrict. So I also would support referring this back to the HR committee for further consideration and look for a, I guess, a more modern approach and a little bit more creative approach than what we see on paper here tonight.
Mrs. Tow?
Again, I agree with Lisa and Tom on referring this back to the committee for further, you know, review. I also want to add that it takes a lot of courage, and that's why we have applications where applicants are asked to disclose their relationships. I don't know, I'm assuming that's on the application, and who they're, if they have affiliations or if they're sitting on some kind of board or council or something. I'm assuming that that's asked of on the application. I also want to remind us that we do have a conflict of interest policy, I believe. And that also helps us police or at least, you know, be able to manage if there's any favoritism or unfairness that's going on. So I support referring this back to the committee for further review. Thank you.
Mr. Gisselman?
Thank you. I voted for this. I'm still in support of it. I feel that, if nothing else, this is a protection for the supervisors and the managers. I think if, if by chance, an in-law is hired, even distant from the supervisor or the manager down the line somewhere, and by chance, if that, that person gets promoted through the ranks, oh, well, this manager is making sure that, the perception is that this person is being somehow encouraged. My brother-in-law, sister-in-law is sort of moving up a little quicker than the usual folks would be with, with promotions. And I want to take that away from managers and supervisors so that they have protections built into it in the hiring process and in the promotion process. I think that the city, within, within my memory, has undergone some, some unpleasantness with regard to some personnel acting out of, out of sorts. And I think that we want to build as much protection into the system as we can, not only for those people being hired, but I think for the supervisors and the managers so that they know that what happens in, in the department is not being, not being able to influence a person's hiring and promotions through the line or the firing. If by chance, that person has to be dismissed, an in-law, well, that may cause some issues within the family itself. But I think then that takes that, that risk of firing and/or promotions or hiring away from the manager. And I think that we should really strive to protect the employees as well as the managers and, and not put the city at risk of, of harm, harm due to some of these instances that may occur. Thank you.
Ms. McElhenney?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hearing that people want this back to HR. We have worked on this how many months?
Approximately six months before it came to committee.
Okay, and how many outside, or outside legal opinions did we get?
We sought out two outside legal opinions. We surveyed all of the states and we surveyed the like-sized municipalities within the state.
So, my question to fellow older people who want to bring this back, what do you want us to do? And I'm being, I'm just being serious, I'm not trying to be flippant or snotty, I just, we have worked diligently on this. Everything was presented to the committee. I made sure it was very vetted out. We gave, you know, besides legal opinions and things like that, that came from all over the state and different states and our outside councils. I don't know, I mean, you, I feel uncomfortable having it just go back to the committee, because I don't know what you want us to do. You know, if you have specific changes and you want to see if they can go through the committee, that's fine, but just to bring it back, I mean, like I said, this hasn't, this wasn't rushed through at all, and we have spent hours and hours on this, and that's why I wanted all the information as much as possible for the committee to hear, so it wasn't just a superficial look. So, I just would like some guidance if it's going back to committee. I just don't, I mean, I don't want to ping-pong ball, and if there is something specific that you are going to request a change, and I don't see a need to go back to committee.
I apologize. We did also consult in-house attorney as well. Sorry, Ann.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. I guess the question is, was there any detailed input or opportunity for input offered to our internal department heads throughout this discussion? Was this discussed in the mayor's monthly staff meeting at all, and were feelers put out into the individual departments to weigh the old policy versus the new proposal and gauge their feedback as to what they felt the implementation would do?
The individual case in question was consulted with the department head.
No, no.
The policy itself.
All the departments.
The policy itself did not go to department heads for survey, no.
Okay, and so that's my concern, because we have not gotten any feedback from the people who run these departments within this organization, that do our hiring, that do our supervising, that vet people for our promotions, and those people are people that we should be hearing from, and I was concerned, and I didn't know until now, that the policy got to the committee floor with no input from department heads internally who do these jobs every day. And that's, I guess, what I would want to see happen, either inside the HR committee or separate from it, but we need some feedback from the people who are, you know, running the different tiers of our management to see whether or not they feel that this is either unnecessary or restrictive, or whether they feel that some change is necessary, because, you know, what happens, and the thing that troubles me, and not even on the specific case that brought this to us in the first place, is in-law. You can't, with a blood relative, you can't undo that relationship, but let's just say you get an in-law that rises to the top of the candidate pool, and that person then is disqualified because they're someone's in-law. So hypothetically, in three months, if that person comes back divorced, they're suddenly okay. The skill set that exists inside the individual is no different, and that's the disparity that I see. And so, you know, not to criticize the committee's work, but I think this has a day-to-day impact on our department heads and the job they do, and they need an opportunity to give their feedback. And they may completely agree with this, and they may love it, and if that's the case, fine, then bring it back as is, but I think if we make the decision tonight with no consult with them, we've frozen out that opportunity for our management.
If I may, the mayor has allowed me to speak. I'm just speaking from my department. I didn't know of this until it was brought to my attention. I understand completely what this would do in the clerk's office with me supervising the front-counter staff, totally. However, as you know, I also administrate elections. Getting election workers is impossible. This caused me to lose an election worker. I have two elections a year. It's not like I intentionally could hire somebody only by blood relative or marriage. We need election workers desperately. So, I just want to share with the council, and thank you for listening, but yeah, it affects my election workers. Thank you.
Ms. Herbst.
Can you put your microphone on?
Yeah, I know, I am sitting here and probably have two tears in each eye. I don't understand where we're going with this either, because I'm on the committee and I thought we had pretty much resolved this, and I felt that Tony and Becky just did one heck of a job presenting everything, and it had been tabled before and brought back and we talked about it, and we just keep dragging our feet and dragging our feet. So, what Lisa's saying is take it to department heads, is that going to make a difference? We going to take this into June, are we going to take this into July? I just think it's a done deal. I don't feel we should be spending any more time. I think we have the proper people in place that can make these decisions, and when we had talked about nepotism and relatives, it was decided that these would be handled on a case-by-case basis. That's my thought.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Harkening back to my friend, Mr. Gisselman's point about protecting department heads, I take kind of like an opposite view. I have a lot of trust in our department heads and the heads they have on their shoulders. I only imagine myself, if I were a department head and was placed in a situation where, you know, my child's spouse or fiance or whatever came into the picture, but maybe they were just a boyfriend or girlfriend at the time. I would be fair, and I would be careful, and I would cross every T and dot every I to make sure the process is respected and unapproachable in its validity. And anybody on this council that thinks we have department heads that would take advantage through favoritism and fast-track people, I find that sort of offensive to me on their behalf. I don't think that we have anybody on staff that would do that, but here we have a policy that effectively discourages marriage. If you want to get around it, don't get married. It discourages marriage, discourages people becoming the legal married parents of children for the sake of maintaining employment. This is the way it is in the 21st century, and this is how we're approaching it, with an old 20th-century hammer. It doesn't look at reality. It's too simple. It needs to be looked at, it needs to be discussed with staff, with our department heads, it needs to be researched more. I know it's legal, the legal opinion is, yes, we can legally do this, but we need to look at it through the lens of today's cultural realities and the potentialities for abuse and how we should, you know, formalize any processes that need formalizing, if needs be, and have this worded correctly, and I'm still, I'm firmly against it, and I really don't understand some of the other side's opinions. Time.
Mrs. Tow.
Becky, you had asked the council for some guidance and feedback on what we would like to have changed. Here's my feedback. In paragraph one, I would remove the word indirect from the entire paragraph. I would also take a look at the red line that was added that talks about indirect reporting responsibility. Starting from that sentence, I would remove the entire thing, because I think that what I had shared earlier is that if you have a direct supervisory role over the candidate, then, you know, that would be the situation where, you know, we may have a conflict, but if you don't, then that would be my suggestion to the committee and to answer your question. Anything that says indirect, I would strike that. Thank you.
Mr. Gisselman.
Could you, just a question, this applies to, this applies seasonal employees?
The policy specifies, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but it refers to employees, so it would apply to all employees.
Okay, thank you. So, seasonals as well, so that would mean that in reference to the...
Yes, in the case of election workers, you couldn't have, you couldn't be related to a department head or be within two reporting tiers with a department, with a direct relation.
So, okay, thank you. I guess I don't have anything from there.
Ms. McElhenney.
Okay, just quickly, I just want to bring up a thought about direct and indirect, and maybe Tony can help with that one more time, because I worked on this a lot and, you know, it gelled, and I probably have better, you know, better kind of understanding, because I've talked for hours and hours and hours about this. Department heads do, I'll ask you the question, do department heads met out supervisory, any kind of, you know, probation, punishment, I mean, anything like that, you know, are they the final purveyors of anything in these, you know, in this kind of relationship, or is all of that done in the lower level?
That depends on the department. Individual departments are structured differently. Generally speaking, the concern with department heads in relation to this policy was the overall influence that a department head may have on an employee's career trajectory. So, even though you may not have an employee who is directly reporting to you, the influence that you extend over that department's career is quite pervasive and can have a big impact. Also, there is a very large perception of impact that comes into play. So, to answer your question, yes, in most circumstances, department heads at the very least are the final authority for hiring and firing decisions, and they end up becoming involved in virtually every disciplinary action that we see in our office.
That's my, my concern is perception, because perception is reality. We all make think, we all know these guys would not do anything, right? They don't. I've gotten calls on this, they don't. It's called the City of Wausau residents. Sometimes I think, you know, I thought at the beginning this was going to be fine. I had talked about it back at Christmas time, you know, with the department head and thought, you know, we can figure out a way. The more legal opinions that came in and the more we talked about it and the more I thought about it, it's perception. Gary brought that up in committee. It's perception. You know, we had, he brought up, there was a entanglement in this city, you know, with a relationship, and they had, you know, it was a reporting relationship, and it was a mess, and it was gaudy, and it was, you know, lots of chatter, and people had to leave their positions. So, all I ask is that perception matters beyond us. And, you know, so I just want you, if, you know, I'm just thinking about this, and especially in a department such as a police department or a fire department, where someone, you know, it can be accused of anything, and the department head, the chief, signs off that there was no follow-play, what is going to be the perception? Because that was his brother-in-law, or that was his brother, or whatever. I just would like everybody, not trying to change minds, everybody to think about that, because it is what's perceived in the City of Wausau, not just in this, because, like he said, I can't believe anybody would think that, you know, that people would think that of our department heads. I don't think, no, I don't think anybody here would have any problem, but perception are people's realities out there, and I think, excuse me, I think people see that, I mean, if you see that in every aspect of this, of this thing. I mean, if it's a development project, if what? People perceive, and then it becomes a reality. And I just, I feel, and it was a hard decision, I felt that I was protecting the police department, because the last thing we need is any perception of, you know, some cronyism or some, you know, anything. And I don't expect it now, when he first starts or even then, but if anything happens, anything with that name, and they come back, we changed a policy even to allow this, because it wasn't allowed before, the perception will really be there, and I just, that's just my thought.
And just for clarification, that incident that Ms. McElhenney was talking about was before most of us were here. So, Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. So, I guess, here's the situation we find ourselves in. I mean, a number of us would like to see the policy be reworked and perhaps redefined in a different way. I mean, Mary's already given some examples of changes that could be made to make the policy easier to work with and still attract qualified candidates. I mean, just on the floor here, at first glance, we already have positive input for what those changes might look like. Now, if we vote this down and don't send it back, you're back to the original handbook, which has some ambiguities, then this change just doesn't happen, so we have to make a decision. Do we want to refer the matter back? And I would, not to say that the department head input would carry the day, but at the end of the day, I think that their insight and their feedback, people who've been managing this organization, is of value, and I wish that the committee had had a chance to hear the consensus of what our internal management feels about this as well. Not to say that they'd be the sole source of information in a decision-making process, but they certainly need to be one gear in the machine. And so, you know, if the committee was taking it back, I'd certainly ask for that input, and I would ask that we look and see a little bit about how the private sector manages stuff like this, and, you know, I bet that in some cases, they do it a little bit differently. And, you know, I personally, I don't care if we have seven legal opinions from, you know, outside attorneys. Is there a way that as a well-managed organization, a balance can be struck? I mean, there's, you have in front of you the most restrictive, cautious decision you can possibly make. Now, within the realm of good management and policy writing, is there a middle for this issue, where you can find something that is a little bit less restrictive, still practical, allows managers to manage, but then also recognizes that within a direct-reporting relationship, there will be certain tiers within a department that, you know, certain employees cannot aspire to as long as that, you know, individual with the relationship is in place, you know, and if we've been using the police department as an example. So, you hire an in-law as a patrolman, and on the front end, you already know that there are certain levels of management or command that that individual, the in-law or whoever, cannot attain while Ben works there. And at some point, when he retires, if that individual wants to move up, fine, so be it, assuming they have time left, but if they don't, they don't. But that person would have to come into the employment relationship understanding that, and we as a managerial function would need to understand that as well. And I think that we have the skill sets in-house to make those decisions without, you know, locking out good applicants, and that's, I guess, what I'm asking us to figure out. So, if the committee can figure that out, I'd make a motion to refer back. But if the committee feels it can't, then my choice I'm left with is to vote this down and we're back to the original handbook. And I'll tell you that the language that's in the original handbook was created when Mike Loy worked here, and he himself said it was some cut-and-paste boilerplate policy language that the committee adopted because it needed a nepotism policy, not because they had some problem that they were trying to address at the time, they just needed a policy and that looked like a good one. So, we're not taking something away that is, has been meticulously created. So, I guess that's what, I'm going to make a motion to refer back, and if that fails, then I'm going to vote this down.
Do I have a second by Mr. Smith?
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, so you may begin voting on the amendment to refer this issue back to human resources. That motion has passed nine to one. We will vote on the original.
There's no amendment.
Oh, it's referred back.
Referred back.
I had written amendment, thank you. I told you I made a lot of mistakes today, didn't I?
Moving on to...
You and my mother.
File number 190505, ordinance of the Plan Commission, rezoning 1551 Westwood Drive from an IB interchange business district to B3 general commercial district. Committee action approved seven to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Undertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal. Do I have a second by Mr. Smith?
Motion passed unanimously.
File number 190505, resolution of the Plan Commission approving a conditional use of 1551 Westwood Drive... at 1551 Westwood Drive to allow for a landscaping contractor office, shops, and yards in a B3 general commercial district. Committee action approved seven to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Ms. Kelbach, second by, is that you, Ms. Herbst? Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Tao? Thank you.
Begin voting. McLean, yours didn't go through yet. That's okay. There we go. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 190506, an ordinance of the Plan Commission, rezoning 110 West Bridge Street, 612, 616, and 618 North First Avenue, and 607, 611, 615, and 617 North Second Avenue, from an R3 two-family residence district to a B3 general commercial district. Committee action approved six to one, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Mr. Neal. Mr. Gisselman.
Just thank you. I voted against this in plan. I feel that this construction is really just too much intrusion into the, into the neighborhood that we have. There are several houses to the north, it doesn't really, you know, this project really doesn't even complete the block, and they're within the neighborhood itself. And I feel that, and I, I understand the Bridge Street business corridor, I get that with CVS and Walgreens, and all up and down Bridge Street on the west side, I get that. But, I think that this is just a little bit too much of an intrusion into the, into that neighborhood, and for car wash, I think that, I think that that has a potential maybe of, of disturbing the neighborhood. Car washes can be noisy at times, and so that's why I voted against this. I think that we have to be sensitive to the neighbors, the people living in the neighborhood, and I think that this is just a little bit too much of a project for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Just a moment, please. Okay. Motion by Nutting, second by Neal, you may begin voting. Motion has passed ten to two.
File number 190506, resolution of the Plan Commission approving a conditional use at 102 West Bridge Street and 612, 616, and 618 North First Avenue to allow for a car wash in a B3 general commercial district. Committee action approved six to one, fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, do I have a second? By Mrs. Rasmussen.
Begin voting. Ms. Tao? There we go. Motion has passed eight to two.
File number 150613, ordinance of the Plan Commission rezoning 1301 North Second Street from an R3 two-family residence district to a UDD Unified Development District, and to be added to the general development plan to allow for multifamily residential units. Committee action approved seven to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal, do I have a second? By Mr. Smith.
Begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 15-0613, a resolution of the Plan Commission approving the precise implementation plan at 1301, 1305, 1309, and 1313, 1315 North Second Street, and 206 Short Street to allow for eight multifamily residential units in the UDD Unified Development District. Committee action approved seven to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, second by Ms. Herbst.
You may begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 15-0613, a resolution of the Plan Commission approving the precise implementation plan at 101, 103, 201, and 205 Short Street, and 1202 and 1204 North Third Street to allow for six multifamily residential units in the UDD Unified Development District. Committee action approved seven to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mrs. Rasmussen, do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst, thank you.
Begin voting. Whoops, excuse me.
Whoops, Mr. Martins. I'm sorry.
I'm going too fast.
No, wait. No, I don't have a problem. Sorry.
Okay, begin voting.
It's okay, Mike, it's a big agenda, so...
Motion passed unanimously.
File number 19-0504, a resolution of the Plan Commission approving a conditional use at 1200 West Wausau Avenue to allow for placement of an eight-by-ten fiber structure, a hut, on the property to house telecommunications equipment and cables in an IR interchange residence district and an R2 single-family residence district. Committee action approved seven to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mrs. Rasmussen, do I have a second? By Mr. Martins. Mrs. Tao?
I did a little bit of research yesterday, just wondering what's going to be sitting inside of that hut, and I saw a bunch of, like, circuit boards and, like, very high-end commercialized, you know, technology equipment. Can, can someone kind of answer, like, what's going to be radiating out of that hut, if anything? Or is it just a centralized location where equipment's going to be stored? Because the huts that I saw, through my research, they're actually, like, high-end commercialized, you know, like, circuit boards that are in there. Can someone just tell us a little bit? I'm looking at John Uding, or anybody else. Is Jerry Klein here? Or, can someone answer that?
Mr. Liman, could you possibly answer that?
No.
Albeit reluctantly, please do, so...
So, I mean, I don't know all the details of what fiber, but this is for fiber technology in fiber optics, so there will be electrical panels in there. I'm not aware that there's anything high voltage. I think it's all low voltage, you know, and I think it's more of a hub, central hubs, like, where all the communication comes together and gets distributed. But what that looks like, I don't know. And I don't know if there's any telecommunications people here that work with fiber every day.
Is TDS Telecom in the audience at all? I get a little concerned when we start providing, you know, space on city-owned parcels, or it reminds me of, like, antennas on top of roofs for, like, school buildings, which I know this is not the case, because I am familiar, but I like to understand. Normally, fiber optics, we're bearing it, right? But somehow, it's, it's going to point back to the central location. I think it's, it warrants us to have a little bit more information before we vote tonight. I would encourage that maybe we have a Jerry Klein, or someone from TDS Telecom. I don't know if that's, if that's why John Uding is here. I keep looking at him, because I know, for some reason, this is going to serve a broadband of opportunities for high-speed internet for, like, the city, the school district, and other partnerships that are part of this. So, I, I guess, before we vote on it, I would just encourage council members to really understand what's actually going to be placed inside of the hut. And we don't know, I mean, this is just Eric saying, I think it's low voltage, but I like to hear a little bit more about if there are any impacts to those living around that area, especially knowing that this is going to be near, you know, residence and stuff like that, too. It's important, thanks.
And if you could, please, your name and address for the record, please.
John Uding, 1212 Anchor Street, Wausau. I'm the Director of Technology for the Wausau School District. I was actually here for another item on the consent agenda, but to my knowledge, this is simply just a connection point for fiber optic cables running through, and it was on to the district property, and the agreement with TDS came to be out of that. And no part of conversations have been made aware of anything emanating out, or any of the antenna things like that. We can certainly bring you more information back if you are seeking that, but it is simply a larger structure to join the fiber optic cables that are running through that area.
Was this already approved at the school board level? Did you even need that at all?
We did not need that. The school board has been informed of it, though.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. Just in the materials that were provided in the packet, it does look like IT equipment or telecommunications equipment, and, you know, that said, with 1200 West Wausau Avenue is West High School, so I would certainly think that if they had been through the school district, they, they would not be permitting that property, that structure and that equipment to be installed on their site if they thought that it posed any danger to the property or to its inhabitants. So, I, I guess I don't have a problem with installing it. I think that if the district is okay with having it on their property, I mean, this really is only about the zoning for it, and if they're willing to allow it to exist on their property, it's not city property, it's district property. So, you know, we allow them some pretty wide latitude with what they do on their schoolgrounds, you know, but for the zoning. So, you know, if it's gone through there and they're okay with it, I guess I don't see a problem.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, of course, I'm not a telecommunications engineer by any stretch, but I would imagine, you know, that being a junction box, essentially, then cables would be routed, like, you know, into the school proper, you know, popping up in some room somewhere. I'm assuming that room isn't, you know, shielded against, you know, electromagnetic radiation, that sort of thing. This is, this is low-level stuff, that, you know, pretty much is everywhere, but it needs a place to be kind of connected, hooked up, reconnected, redirected, that sort of thing with, and it's eight by ten, I guess they have some room to move in there while you're doing it. So, I really don't see anything here that is alarming, so I'll support it.
Mrs. Tao?
Well, I certainly don't want to hold up the process. I would vote in agreement with this, pending that we get something in writing from the school district. So, just to reiterate, this didn't go to the school board, because it was probably felt or thought that it wasn't necessary, but I would just like to add that if I vote yes tonight, I'd like to get something in writing from the school district saying that they were okay with it, since it's going to be on their property.
Mr. Martins.
Thank you. I did sit in on that Plan Commission meeting that evening, and heard the gentleman from TDS Telecom speak. It is my impression that the equipment that's going to be housed inside this enclosure is fiber optic interconnection equipment, so there's going to be no more incidental radiation than what would happen in a, say, a server room in a, in any kind of business or other sort of technology hub. There's no intentional radiating devices that appear to be planned for the structure, antennas, or anything of that nature. So, there should be, it's my understanding that there should be no intentional radiators in this, in this structure. It's all fiber optic equipment.
All right. We have a motion by Rasmussen, second by Martins. You may begin voting. Motion has passed unanimously.
File number 19-0504, a resolution of the Plan Commission approving a conditional use at 610 McDonald Street to allow for placement of an eight-by-ten fiber structure, another hut, on the property to house telecommunications equipment and cables in an R3 two-family residence district. Committee action approved seven to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, a second by Mr. Smith. Mrs. Tao?
Anne, I just have some clarification for procedural stuff. If I was mentioning earlier that I'd like something in writing, do I have to say that in a form of amending the, the resolution, or can I just make that request?
Well, I think you can make the request, and you did, and I have no reason to believe that Mr. Uding won't take that back and honor it, but technically, from a procedural standpoint, yes, if we wanted to hold them to that, and you wanted the whole council to vote on it, I would have amended it to add that language at the end of the resolution.
Okay.
Before the vote was taken, so consider that in the future.
Okay, so then, I can't go back to it anymore. All right, thank you.
No, but I think you can still ask the, Mr. Uding's coming up anyway.
Okay.
I think they'll be happy to address it.
Even in a jog, there we go.
We will provide you the signed agreement with TDS. So, I don't know if we forward that to you, Anne.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good.
And thank you, Anne, for that counsel.
Okay, so, we're voting on the second item here with fiber optics, I believe, for 610 McDonald Street. You may begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 14-1014, a resolution of the Plan Commission amending the precise implementation plan at 1300 North River Drive to allow for a shade sail structure in a UDD Unified Development District. Committee action approved six to one, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Not everybody at once, please. Motion by Ms. Kelbach, thank you, a second by Mr. Smith. Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. I have some concerns about this item, in reading the minutes that came from the Plan Commission, and subsequent to that, I'd gotten some feedback from Mr. Peckham, who sits on the Plan Commission, obviously, he's not with us tonight. In the minutes, he had the questions, which is why I asked him for a little clarification. And I don't know quite how many times we've had to say with regard to WOW, if we rewind to the original rendering of this building, you know, and make sure that it comes out like what we were promised, and we've had that discussion surrounding poles, and patios, and murals, and all sorts of things, and shade sails, it should be part of that, too. When this building was originally designed, the shade sail structures that were originally proposed, I believe in the original rendering were red, and they had, they were smaller, they had different anchor points. They were not affixed to a structure that looks like, this looks like staging. You know, like, the covering you would see over a stage in a, in a venue. And so it wasn't invasive like that. It was that there were some anchor points, and you'd have a shade sail, but it didn't take over the entire patio area. And my concern is obstruction of the mural, because we've worked so hard to get them to do the mural first, do it, then do it right. And then we've engaged local organizations to help with it, and make sure it's done and done right, and that, those community paint days are coming. And so Pat's concern in the Plan Commission was, will this structure block completely the view of the mural from the path? And it will. And so, that said, his question was, have any other shade structure options been considered by the owner? Table umbrellas, smaller shade structures, perhaps different, different angles, different positioning? None of that has happened. And so, this is another one that I think needs to go back to the Plan Commission, to work with the owner, to exhaust other alternatives first, because this large rectangular structure that these sails are affixed to takes over the view from the path, and it obstructs the murals, and it basically takes over that patio. So, it's, it is different. That's why this requires a UDD amendment. It's different from the plan that we approved. And so if we would rewind to when they first came in, lots of things that have come down the pike have been different from the original plan, and we have held firm and forced that issue back to the rendering, to make sure the product we get at the end is the product we were promised in the beginning. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion that this item be sent back to Plan, to work with the owner to consider other shade options for that patio that don't obstruct the view of the murals. If we could get a second for that.
May I have a second by Mr. Neal? And then moving on, as far as speakers, Mr. Martins?
Do we vote on that motion first?
Did you want to still speak to the amendment?
Did you still want to speak?
Or did you want to address something with the original item? Mr. Martins and Mr. Neal both had their lights on.
I think Mr. Martins was before me.
Yeah, I was gonna, well, I was gonna address something with the original, original item, so, but, it really dovetails with the amendment, too, I guess, so...
Okay. So, did you want to address it at this point, or do you want to wait to see if it's going to be referred back to committee?
Let me, let me address it now.
Okay, certainly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you know, I'm in total agreement with Elise on this one. I think that these, this, this structure is quite large, and changes, you know, it kind of changes the facade of the, of the WOW building, and there was, you know, a lot of community engagement that went into designing the murals that really, really are quite striking, and I, and I feel that anybody down on the riverfront is going to miss the full impact of the murals if they do, if, if this type of structure is, is put in place. So, I, I support Elise's amendment on this matter, to send it back to Plan.
Yeah, just send it back, thank you. Anne? Yep.
Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to express my support for sending it back as well. Originally, you know, years ago, when this... Originally, you know, years ago, when this went through the Economic Development Committee, we looked at a lot of stuff. And we really tried to involve ourselves to, to get something that fulfilled a vision. And, you know, we were all collectively pretty happy about the, the mural that came along, which addressed one of our concerns since the beginning. And this is kind of like a backward step to me. It's, it's, it's too much, too much of a solution for a sun problem. And I think there are other ways to go about this. So, I, I support this going back to plan for, so our concerns could be addressed and other options could be looked at.
Mrs. Rasmussen?
Thank you. And I guess just for clarification, you know, for people who watch our meetings and that, you know, they may ask themselves, well, why does the city involve itself in this, to this level with micromanaging the appearance of a public or a private sector property? And it's because we made a substantial public investment in getting that property going and getting the, the site prepared and, and the lot to make that project, which was our first project on that riverfront, something special. And so, from the early design phases through the opening of that business, we have grappled with getting the plan that looks, the renderings were fantastic. But keeping that plan on track along the way as things came together, there were a lot of reminders that had to be issued that the plan says this, not that. And this is another one of those things that I think we need to hold firm.
Okay, so we have a motion by Rasmussen, second by Neal to refer this item back to the Plan Commission to speak with the owner if there are any other suggestions or options for shade on the patio area. And you may begin voting. Motion has passed unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Transmission of committee business to council for the items marked pending committee action. Two-thirds vote is required. Motion by Mr. Neal. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst?
Begin voting. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 02-1005, a resolution of the Finance Committee accepting dedication of a portion of the following for public right-of-way regarding the Thomas Street project. 1040 South Third Avenue and 306 West Thomas Street, 1107 South Third Avenue, 1300 Cleveland Avenue, 102 West Thomas Street, 110 East Thomas Street, 118 East Thomas Street, 120 East Thomas Street, 109 East Thomas Street, 138 East Thomas Street, 140 East Thomas Street, 230 East Thomas Street and 246 East Thomas Street. Committee action approved five to zero, the fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Nutting, a second by Mrs. Rasmussen?
Begin voting. Motion has passed seven to three.
File number 17-0410, resolution of the Finance Committee authorizing application to 2019 Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant for the Riverwalk Trail Project, Public Trail Development. Committee action approved five to zero, fiscal impact will be none. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Martins, a second by Mr. Neal?
Begin voting. That motion has passed unanimously.
And file 02-1005 from the Finance Committee, a resolution approving a jurisdictional offer process to the owner of 1041 South Third Avenue. Committee action approved five to zero, the financial impact will be $60,000. Entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Nutting?
Begin voting. That motion has passed seven to three.
And before we talk about closed session, I'll open it up for anybody out in the audience that would like to come forward and speak about a topic either on the agenda or not. Now's your chance. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on a matter? Again, would anybody like to come forward and speak on a matter? And one more time, anybody want to come forward and speak? That portion is now closed. If I could find a volunteer to read the closed session? Motion, okay, Mr. Nutting, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we go into closed session pursuant to 19.85, Subparagraph 1, Subparagraph E of the Wisconsin statutes for deliberating or negotiating purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding negotiating the terms of a development agreement with Riverlife Wausau LLC.
And can I get a second? Second by Mr. Neal?
Begin voting. That motion has passed nine to one.
And we will reconvene back into open session. And with the exception of the city clerk, the city attorney and the economic development director, all other department heads are excused for the evening. We will be back, thank you.